Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting review and approval of the construction of a seventy-eight space parking lot associated with a proposed restaurant located at fifty-six seventy-one Highway three eleven. Sections twenty-eight, one thirty-six of the parish zoning regulations states that any proposed parking lot consisting of fifty or more spaces shall receive parking plan approval by the Zoning and Land Use Commission. The minimum number of parking spaces required by zoning ordinance is seventy-five, and the applicant is proposing seventy-eight. The main ingress egress to the site is off of Highway three eleven with a service delivery ingress off of Polk Street. The applicant has received DOTD driveway approval. The parking lot configuration and layout provide for adequate vehicular and pedestrian circulation as well as emergency vehicle access. The proposed grass and other landscape islands are consistent with the overlay district landscape requirements for the vehicular use area. The applicant has applied for a building permit, and the only remaining approval item is zoning site plan approval. A site visit was performed and adjacent property owners have been notified. The staff didn't receive any calls about the application. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, administration. Commissioners comments or a motion?
Motion to approve the recommendation.
I have a motion by Mr. Billiot, a second by Mr. McGuire. All approved, aye? All opposed, nay? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright, two preliminary hearing. A rezoning from R one, single-family residential to R three, multifamily residential. Eleven twenty-eight and eleven thirty. Dasbit Street, Terrebonne, um, what is that, uh, ministeria alliances.
It's just a preliminary hearing.
Yeah, we got, you know, just a motion on that. I just need a, uh, motion. I have a motion by Mr. Gold, second by Mr. Rogers. All approved, aye? All opposed, nay? So motion passes. Staff report.
Uh, yes, sir. Hold on one second. I'm, oh, I think this might work. Or no, that's Becky moving it. See if we can get. Yep, alright. Okay, staff report for zoning. So this afternoon, we had circulated, um, a, uh, PDF, um, with, uh, some revised or proposed revisions to certain portions of the zoning, um, with respect to concerns that we've had um, in some of the residential neighborhoods about placement of, uh, modular structures. Uh, we've had, that has led to further discussions about, um, prefabricated structures. You all may recall, not too long ago, we had an issue in Lisa Park on Cabaness Drive where somebody had brought in a couple of, uh, office trailers and started playing the what-if game with the permit office. What if we do this? It turns it into that and so forth. Um, and so in response to, to those inquiries from some of the residents and from some of the council members, we started looking into what could we do with our zoning regulations to address concerns about modular homes? Now, modular homes are a type of pre-manufactured housing, just like a mobile home is pre-manufactured. The main difference, though, between a modular and a mobile home is that modular homes are built to international building code standards, just like a frame house would have to be. Whereas a mobile home are built to HUD standards. That's the main difference. I mean, there's some other things, too. Um, and certainly cost is one of them. Modular's are a little bit more than a mobile home, but generally not as much as a traditional house. But I also like to use the analogy that a modular is a lot like a car in the sense that you have a base model and you can start throwing options at it. The base model's gonna look just like a mobile home typically. Now, since June of twenty-twelve, we've had thirteen modular homes placed in single fam- well, in residential zone districts. And I do recall on more than one occasion, uh, when that home showed up, we started getting flooded with calls. I thought you couldn't have mobile homes in the neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera, and we had to explain that it's not a mobile home. It's a modular home. And we know that because when they apply for the permit, they have to provide the stack of inspections and stamps, dr- stamp drawings and all that good stuff that go along with it. Um, so with that in mind, we thought, well, first we need a modular home definition. So that's the first thing on what was circulated is creating a new definition for modular home and it's simp- keeping it as simple as we can. It's a prefabricated structure built to international building code standards assembled onsite from factory-built modules. That's it. There's nothing about sizes, which if you look at our definition of mobile homes, it talks about a certain size and dimensions, and it talks about being on a chassis with wheels. It just gets this, in my opinion, there's too much in it and people look to poke holes at it all the time. I think if we just keep it simple, it's just a prefabricated structure built to building code standards. That's, that's all it needs to be.
Right.
So what we were suggesting, or what we are suggesting, is that we place this in R one, R two, R two M, R three, um, sorry, not R three, um, yeah, R three as a special exception. So right now, it's just permitted in all, all those districts. You don't have to go, go get any sort of special permission other than the permit. Now, sometimes they might need a variance from a setback like you would for any other house, but if they don't, then they just apply for a permit. So this would be an extra step in that process for modular home. So they would, they would be required to go to the Board of Adjustment. So why the Board of Adjustment? Well, the Board of Adjustment has powers and duties that they have certain criteria, and all of the criteria have to be met by the applicant in order for the board to approve it. And there's two items in the criteria that basically are focused on, I'm gonna paraphrase, but it's not altering the character of the district in which, of the conforming properties in the district in which the special exception is being sought. So in my mind, what that means is the board has the authority to place conditions of approval that we as administration just couldn't simply just do. Um, that would be arbitrary and capricious. But the Board of Adjustment could. And so what, for example, if somebody wanted to place a modular home in a residential district and all the surrounding houses in that area have front porches and dormered windows, then the condition of approval would be, alright, for this modular, you need to put those options on there to make it more in keeping with the character of the houses in the neighborhood. Um, and it's a special exception. Board of Adjustment, like your meetings, you know, there's a public notice requirement. For the Board of Adjustment, though, it's a little bit different than some of the others. It's two hundred and letters go out to all property owners within two hundred and fifty feet. It is an open meeting, of course, and it is a public hearing. So residents have an opportunity to come in, ask questions, submit comments, whatever. Um, now, if that happens and, and say the Board of Adjustment approves it, approves it with conditions, whatever, that's it. That's where it stops. It doesn't go to the council from there. It just, it ends with the Board of Adjustment. Unless somebody appeals the decision from the Board of Adjustment, in which case the appeals go to court. They don't go to the council. Um, that's a unique characteristic about boards of adjustment, and that's not unique to Terrebonne. That's pretty much in all municipalities that have zoning boards like that. Um, so that's one of the, the proposed revisions. And then the, the other bit is, um, this has to do with more of the instance that we had in Lisa Park. And of course, that's just the most recent one, but this comes up, has come up on more than one occasion. Um, in our supplementary regulations, under the supplementary yard regulations, right now, under residential accessory structures, it, it says portable storage units shall not be permitted as permanent accessory structures in residential districts. It's on the last page. Or on a property used for residential purposes. So that means that you can't, you know, the pod, that's like a typical one, right? If you get a pod delivered to your house, you can't just keep it there indefinitely in your yard or in your driveway. Um, now, that same statement goes on to say that if it's associated with an open building permit because you're doing an addition or renovations to the house, sure, you could have it there. Or if you're, if it's gonna be there for just a temporary period of time, thirty days, because you're moving. I mean, that's why they exist, or at least that's how they started, right? Um, so that's allowable, but to keep it as a permanent structure, um, wouldn't be permitted. So we're expanding on that a little bit and adding some additional language that just says structures such as, but not limited to, portable storage units, shipping containers, and office trailers, because that's what we're starting to see a lot of. People are bringing in Connex boxes. They're bringing in office trailers from job sites, um, that are essentially modular structures in a way. Um, but they're, they're trying to use that as say, oh, well, it's, it's a shed, it's for storage. And then, you know, lo and behold, six months later magically, it's being used as a, a dwelling. You know, somebody's living in it.
So, so I agree with the second one. The first one, can, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
So what's the reasoning, the, the push for, to get the modular homes in R one, two, and three?
Well, the concern is that it's just such a stark difference in character uh, from the home, the surrounding properties. You know, R one and R two don't allow for mobile homes. And I, I mean, I have to guess that the main reason behind why that was set up that way is because, you know, single-family residential, I mean, they didn't want mobile homes in there. And so modular, if it looks like a mobile home, I think that, that creates a lot of issues for people. But if there's a way to require conditions be placed, options be added. Now, look, the Board of Adjustment could look at it and say, well, we don't agree, uh, we think it's fine the way it is, and they don't have to put conditions. They just have the ability to do it.
So right now, refresh my memory, the modular home is not allowed?
It is allowed.
Okay.
Right now, we have no definition of modular home. It's just considered, we don't have a definition of house either. It's just, it's not a mobile home, so it's a house. Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay. I get it.
So, um, you know, like I said, this is a, the first time we're talking about it. We just, you know, you guys got it today. So naturally, what we'd like to do is see about getting this, you know, placed on the December eighteenth uh, meeting agenda, um, to have a official public hearing, you know, to consider, you know, this and, you know, with the ultimate intention of, of putting it forward to the council, you know, once we're done with it.
No, I, I think it's a good thing. We've been talking about it for a couple of months now, both of these items, so I, I do think it's time to move it forward, so. After the RV parked, this was the next one, um, that people wanted us to put in the agenda. Okay, so at this point, we just discussed it. Any other commissioner comments on these two, uh, situations?
Well, and, and just to be, you know, clear, too, on the agenda, it says discussion and possible action. So possible action would be calling for the public hearing. But it also goes on to say regarding the placement of modular structures in R one zoning districts. And I just wanna make it clear that when we got, after we had already submitted the language to Becky for the agenda, as we got Derek and Henry and I got deeper into this thing, we said, well, wait a minute, we can't just stop at R one. This needs to go in residential districts. And then the pod thing came in as an afterthought.
Sure. No, it needs to be clarified and classified. Derek, you had something?
Just for the public, if this is put on the December, uh, meeting, just for anyone that's looking into it, even I know the commission knows this, but for everybody, the only thing that's being changed is the language that's in bold and underlined. Sometimes people get confused and think that everything in this packet is gonna be brand new. But obviously, everything that's not bold and underlined is pre-existing in the code. It's just the stuff that is bold and underlined would be added. So just for anyone that wants to look at it, so that, that might help for, uh, the December eighteenth meeting. I don't want anyone to come for public and say, why are we adding all this language?
Got it. Okay. Mr. Thibodeau?
Yes, sir. I, I obviously, I, you know, I didn't get a chance to read it yet and plan to, but do we, are we requiring that they be pla- modular, being placed on a permanent foundation? Is that part of the link?
That's, that's, that's the case now, so that wouldn't change.
Case now?
Yes, sir. That would not change.
Okay, yeah. Okay, well, anyway, I'll probably have more questions when I get a chance to read it, but I did wanna ask that, so. I didn't read the ones that exist now, so I'll get to read them, I guess. Thank you.
Yeah, wait, wait, put your, actually, your mic. So the other thing I'll say, too, is, um, I know you mentioned the IBC codes, and I know modular follows them, but I don't think it's up to date as far as what local contractors have to go through on our codes versus with the modular. They're always behind. It's not the same year as what we're building, you know? So, so it's always behind if you, if you get a local contractor to bill it versus the modular home.
I, well, that's really a question for our chief building official, but what I will state is that, you know, there's still, a modular home would still be required to meet local requirements, and I'm, I'm thinking, first of all, wind load.
Right.
So regardless of where the thing is manufactured, whatever the wind load is of where you intend to place it, so when you order that unit, you better be mindful of what the wind load requirement is, because they might have to, you know, make some mods in the factory as it's going down the assembly line.
Correct.
Um, like with the foundation, too. I mean, if you're in a special flood hazard area, the modular has to be BFE plus one, just like any other home. So there are some, I guess, building code requirements set forth by the state of Louisiana that they have to meet, but yeah, as far as the IBC stuff, uh, if they're a year or two off of what, you know, the state requirements, the state is, state adopts IBC code as amended by the state. So the state plays around with it a little bit.
Like, you know, insulation just went from R thirty to R thirty-eight, our strapping just changed, like, uh, you know, so normally in a modular home, that doesn't happen as fast as it happens to us. They are years behind catching up with that. Mr. Thibodeau?
Yeah, just one other thing, uh, in the existing code, does it say local, state, and international? And if it doesn't, perhaps we should, since you just talked about the state, we ought to say local, state, and whatever that, that other one is.
Definitely.
Oh, in the definition?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Yeah. We could, yes, we could find a way to, you know, as applicable kind of thing, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, 'cause what I would like to see, you know, as a, as a, just being honest, as a local contractor, you know, if we're gonna have these modular, modular homes compete against us, put us on the same playing field, you know? They're cheaper, but there's a reason why they're cheaper. So it puts us at a disadvantage if you allow both of us to build in the same neighborhood, but yet the qualifications are different for both.
Yeah.
Just my thoughts.
Definitely wanna bring that to the Louisiana State Construction Code Council.
Yep. Alright. Okay, um, any other in the staff reports? We're good?
No, we just.
Do you wanna, we want a motion on that? Sure.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and put this, uh, item for discussion as a public hearing at our next meeting.
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers, a second by Mr. Thibodeau. All approved, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? So motion passes.
Thank you.
Commissioner comments? Public comments? Motion to adjourn? I have a motion by Mr. Rogers, a second by Mr. Thibodeau. All approved, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? So motion passes. Alright, now we're gonna convene as the Regional Planning Commission. We'll have the prayer by Mr. Thibodeau and the pledge by Mr. Gold.
I got here late, God, but I thank you, thankful that I did get here to pray the sec- for the second meeting. Lord, we thank you this evening for the opportunity to be present. We ask and pray for Terrebonne Paris and our citizens. We pray that what we do tonight is a blessing to all. These are the blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Alright, Ms. Becky, roll call.
Mr. Billiot?
Present.
Mr. Gold?
Here.
Mr. Liner?
Here.
Mr. McGuire?
Here.
Mrs. Quansaw? Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Sudier?
Here.
Mr. Thibodeau?
Present.
We have a forum.
Thank you, Ms. Becky. Conflict disclosure. I remind the commissioners that anytime tonight a conflict of interest exists, arises, or arises or is recognized as to any issue during this meeting, he or she should immediately disclose it and to recuse himself or herself from participating in a debate, discussion, and voting on this matter. Does any member have anything to disclose at this time? Alright, D. Mr. Sudier. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, that's me first. Uh, D one, Homer, Terrebonne, Regional Planning Commission minute, minutes for the special meeting of September twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, for the regular meeting of October sixteen, twenty-twenty-five. I have a motion by Mr. Rogers, second by Mr. Billiot. All approved, aye? All opposed, nay? So motion passes. Mr. Sudier?
I approve the re- remittance of payment for the November twentieth, twenty-twenty-five invoices and the treasury report for October twenty-twenty-five and the amendment to the twenty-twenty-five budget.
I have a motion by Mr. Sudier, a second by Mr. Rogers. All approved, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? So motion passes. Communications?
Yes, sir, I have, uh, some pertaining to items, uh, G one and G two. On the agenda, it's a letter dated November twentieth, twenty-twenty-five. Dear Chris, please let this letter serve as a request to allow the above items be removed from tonight's agenda, leave them on the table, and have them considered for next month's meeting, December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Ms. Dickerson of the, at the Board of Health has yet to discuss the substandard sized lots with her supervisor. They have been shorthanded lately, sometimes working other parishes and haven't been able to get together. Thank you sincerely, Ken Remember.
Alright, thank you, administration. I need a motion to take G three off the table. Oh, you gotta table these two first, again? Oh, okay. I thought they were still on the table. Alright, I have a motion to keep one and two.
Just go ahead and do it.
Yeah.
We, so we're gonna keep them on the table?
No, go ahead and, and motion to table and just to make.
That's what I thought.
Well, here we go. Here's the man with the answers right there.
Hey, so if two of them were tabled before and they tabled again, do we have to re-table them or are they already existing on the table?
Was, the motion was to table not to continue to this meeting, correct?
Wasn't when they originally tabled, it was to table to the next regular?
I believe so, yes. So now we need to, we need to, yeah, it was really continuing it to this meeting, so we're gonna continue it to December. If it was just laid on the table, in general, we wouldn't need to take it all, we would just leave it on the table. But I think it was moved to this meeting, so we need to continue it to the next December eighteenth meeting. If that's what the applicant wants, is that what he wants?
Yeah.
Yes. So I need a motion to table it again.
As per developers' request. G one and G two.
I have a motion by Mr. Billiot, a second by Mr. Sudier. All approved, aye? All opposed, nay? Motion passes. I need a motion to take G three off the table. I have a motion by Mr. Rogers, a second by Mr. Billiot. All approved, aye? All opposed, nay? So motion passes. G three, yes, sir?
David Waits, David Waits Engineering and Surveying, seventy-eight thirty-nine Park Avenue, Homer, representing, uh, Mr. La Day, uh, this particular project, it's, uh, located in Chauvinage, just south of Bayou Nuff Court, uh. We, uh, tabled it for the last meeting to address some of the outstanding items that we had to take care of. Everything's been taken care of. We are asking for variance for the front foot, uh, along a public road. Uh, the existing lots all in front of it all kinda follow the same pattern, and we're just asking for that one variance.
Okay, uh, first I'll just read it just to make sure. It's, uh, G three, survey and division of property belonging to Mr. Rodney La Day junior into lot one and remaining land, and then we'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Uh, anybody from the public wanna speak on this matter? Go on one time public, two times public, three times public? I need a motion to close public. I have a motion by Mr. Sudier, a second by Mr. Rogers. All approved, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes. Administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is minor subdivision process D to create two lots for single-family residential use, including a request for variance from the twenty-five foot minimum frontage requirement in lieu of an existing twenty-foot servitude of passage. The existing stone driveway off of Bayou Nuff Court falls within a tw- twenty-foot servitude of passage and provides access to five existing residences. The proposed division would create a new lot that would be accessed by the same servitude. Lot configuration and layout meet all other parish subdivision regulation standards of development. Uh, engineering has approved the drainage plan, and all utility letters have been submitted, including the Department of Health. Uh, staff recommends approval of the frontage variance request in lieu of the existing servitude of passage that would be extended to the proposed lot, and approval of the subdivision on the following conditions. Land use is depicted on the plat. Method of sewage disposal needs to be depicted on the plat. Location and description of at least one permanent type benchmark depicted on the plat and revise the line work around the Bachir tract and label it to indicate that it is not a part of this subdivision.
Alright, commissioners, comments or a motion? Mr. Thibodeau?
Mr. Waits, you agreed to the condition?
Yes, sir.
On that?
In fact, I've already made them. I've already made those changes.
In that case, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we approve based on staff recommendations.
I have a motion by Mr. Thibodeau, a second by Mr. Billiot. All approved, aye? All opposed, nay? So motion passes.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, bud. Alright, H one, division of property belonging to Mr. Barry Bouquet, uh, into tracks A and B. Yes, sir. Name and address?
Uh, Shane Kirkland, four twelve South Van Avenue, Homer, Louisiana. Uh, I'm here, I'm Mr., on behalf of Mr. Barry Bouquet. He's looking to divide his property into tracks A and tracks B. Uh, both tracks meet minimum road frontage and, uh, lot size requirements. We've applied for all the required serviceability letters. Um, at the time of my application, I was still, uh, I still hadn't received anything from Energy or the Board of Health. I've since got those letters and I should have emailed them over to Becky. Um, we provided engineering, uh, with the drainage calculations for the proposed lots. Um, I think our only issue here is we're requesting a variance for the maximum distance from a fire hydrant. Um, we're proposing a draft site as a substitute. We've already contacted uh, the Little Caillou Fire Department, and we've constructed that draft site, and they have inspected and approved the draft site.
Okay. We will open it to the pub, oh, we did, did we do the public on this? No. We'll open it to the public on this matter. Anybody have any questions on this matter? Go on once. Public once, public twice. Three times public.
Motion to close public?
I have a motion by Mr. Thibodeau, second by Mr. McGuire. All approved, aye? All opposed, nay? Motion passes. Administration?
Okay. Yeah, they do. I, I would've missed that earlier. Okay, um. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is a minor subdivision process D to create two lots for single-family residential use, including a request for variance from the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot fire hydrant distance requirement in lieu of a draft site. Uh, parish subdivision regulation standards for development do provide for variances from fire hydrant requirements in lieu of dry hydrants, provided that the relevant fire district certifies that the dry hydrant, or in this case, they required a draft site, meet the applicable standards. The Little Caillou Volunteer Fire Department issued a certification letter on October twentieth, twenty-twenty-five. The lot configuration and layout meet all other parish subdivision regulation standards of development. Engineering has approved the drainage plan, and all the utility letters have been submitted, including the Department of Health. Staff recommends approval of the fire hydrant variance in lieu of the draft site and approval of the subdivision.
Thank you, administration. Commissioners, any comment or a motion? I have a motion by, I have a motion by Mr. Sudier. A second by Mr. Rogers, all approved, aye. All opposed, nay. So motion passes. Thank you, bud. Staff report.
Uh, we have, uh, the meeting schedule for
Twenty twenty six?
Twenty twenty six. It says regarding a change to the twenty twenty five meeting schedule and deadlines, but that should be twenty six.
Next time we cut the finger off.
Is it on here? No, I don't have it. It's two.
And then there was two.
She missed it.
She didn't catch it.
Okay. All right, so, uh, the change for the twenty twenty six meeting schedule and deadline pertains to the February meeting. Um, instead of the third Thursday, it'd be the fourth Thursday due to the Mardi Gras and President's Day holiday week. So the meeting date is February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-sixth. So that puts the application deadline as February ninth, twenty twenty-sixth. It looks the rest are the third Thursday, yeah. So, we just motion to adopt?
Yeah, typically we don't have to have a motion because it's in the bylaws that we have to have a meeting every Thursday. But we do need a motion because we're making a change.
Gotcha.
Makes sense. All right, Mr. Thibodeau.
Yeah, just so I understand this correctly, I says twenty twenty-five, but you meant twenty twenty-six, right?
Yeah, it's a typo.
Okay, note that correction. And with that in mind, I'll offer the motion that we recognize the suggested change for the February meeting as per staff request.
I have a motion by Mr. Thibodeau, a second by Mr. Sudier. Rogers, a second by Mr. Rogers, all approved, aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Mr. Derek.
I, um, around this time of year, I always like to mention, uh, the next meeting is the Thursday before Christmas. So if, uh, if, you know, we learn now that we won't have quorum, we could possibly change that, but if everyone thinks they're available on the eighteenth, then there is no need to even discuss it, really.
It's the week before.
It's Thursday, yes, the Thursday before Christmas, but sometimes people go out, you know, they go out of town on that weekend and then for the whole next week, so. If y'all are available, then that's perfect. If not, we could know now and we could change it.
I'm gonna be here.
All right, then, it, I didn't even say anything. Eighteen. Perfect.
Nobody's.
You gonna be on the table?
Uh, I'll be right here, Fe-, uh, December eighteenth at six o'clock, I'll be seated in this chair.
We're saying jingle bells, right?
Uh-huh. You, you lead, I'll follow. I'm a baritone.
Administrative approvals. J one through five.
Go ahead and move, hide in J one through five.
Motion by Mr. Rogers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Thibodeau, all approved, aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Committee report.
Committee did not meet. What, oh, well, okay, yeah, just for the record, um, a number of you have talked to me about it and other folks as well. Uh, so the, uh, RV park regulations, so, uh, after, uh, the October, yeah, it was our October meeting or was it September, actually? Yeah. We submitted them to the, uh, Parish Council. We uploaded them for the Community Development and Planning Committee so that they, with a resolution to introduce these new ordinances, um, and that they could ca- then call for a public hearing two weeks later. Uh, that item was pulled off of that agenda uh, by the chairman of the Community Development and Planning Committee. Um, that's Ms. Kim Chauvin. I spoke to her Monday after the council meeting. She's looking at making some revisions and then intends to put them back forward to the council. So if, if people contact you, hey, whatever happened, what's going on?
What revisions is you trying?
I'm not sure.
Uh, is that gonna come back to us?
No.
Look at it, or we have, we're done.
You would, my advice would be to, let's keep track of the council agendas and then when they do put it up there, I'll make sure that we notify you guys and so you can attend.
Okay, Mr. Thibodeau.
But you might wanna reach out, in the meantime, you might wanna reach out if you, if you feel so inclined.
You know, in reading the minutes, and I did read the minutes of the proposal and the comments from the audience and, and chairman's recognizing various people. You did mention my concern about North Terrebonne, particularly the Bay Black and, and, uh, one eighty-two area over in the west side of the parish, but some in the north too, so. You know, we don't have them exceptions that you noted in the South Terrebonne stuff and, and how do we be treated fairly and equally in this case? We being the people who live in the area I just mentioned.
I mean, we had, at least in the southern area, we had a a line, you know, some sort of mark, or, I, yeah, I mean, something.
Doesn't change it.
The levee was what we ended up using. Um, I mean, there's nothing like that in the north area of the parish, so that's not necessarily a possibility. I don't have an answer for that, but I think that that's something that definitely need to pass on to the council. But, I mean, it would be, I'm sure, very useful to pass on with a recommendation. This is what I, okay, we would like to have the same courtesies, offer the same considerations in the northern areas of the parish. And this is how I think it might be able to be implemented.
Cause we got the feedback from people from the south, we gave them what they wanted, and the people from the north, we gave them what they wanted. They had two different mindset. The, the people in the north wanted more restrictions, the people in the south wanted less restrictions. So we gave them what they wanted. They wanted to be different, so we gave it to them.
I didn't s- when I looked at that, I didn't see any people in the north commenting. Was there some?
Yeah.
That was in the committee. That, that was more so addressed in the committee meetings, not the public hearings.
Correct, it was in our, our committee meetings that we had.
There was also a gentleman that gave you that he wants to build something by a blue light.
Well, actually, when I speak of the north and northwest, I'm thinking of gray north.
Yeah, people from.
Yeah, and I'm thinking of Bay Black and, and, and one eighty-two in the west end of the parish.
Yeah, we, we had.
You know, that's rural, that's rural areas.
Yeah, Water Plant Road was here.
Water Plant Road was here.
Yeah, okay.
Just for the record, uh, those committee meetings were commission meetings, cause we changed them.
That's correct.
So it was the order that, what were they on Tuesdays? Those, those meetings? It was a Thursday before. That's what it was. So, yeah, they had some people from North Terrebonne come on. I, I wanna say both of those, uh, second Thursday meetings. We also had Water Plant Road folks at the traditional subdivision regulation review committee meetings.
Yeah, that voice was.
Well, those folks were probably protecting their property, right? Property value and that kinda stuff. It wasn't about equal playing field. I'm talking about any exceptions that you give people who already have RV pack, park or mobile home park. There are some exceptions those folks in the south are getting. And so I'll, I'll talk to the council person or the chairman of that committee and I'll maybe show up at the public hearings and, and voice my complaint or my concerns. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. All right.
As a note, I'll, uh, I'll let y'all know when it's coming up to the, uh, the committee meeting for the council. I'll, uh, if it's, if it's right after this, I'll let everyone know at this meeting. If it's not, I'll send out an email so that you all can go and have your voice heard.
Appreciate it. All right, uh, chairman comment, I'm, no, that's me. Public comments? Anybody from the public? All right. Oh, Mr. Rogers.
On the email that we got about the training, is there, or are there any ramifications that can come before this group for people that have not completed the training?
So there's, let's,
Different ones.
Let's also talk about, there's two separate, there's the training that we all have to do every year. The ethics, the sexual harassment, that's a requirement by the state. Um, then there's also the planning commissioner training that's required of all members. You're technically required to only have to do it one time, but you're required to have it done in the, within the first year of having, you know, being placed on the, uh, appointed to the commission. Um, in both of those instances, failure to do that technically results in you are, I guess, no longer a commissioner. Um, please elaborate. You're supposed to do them, and if you don't, what, what realistically happens is eventually you get a letter letting them know that you haven't done it. If you don't do it, usually it says you don't do it in a certain amount of time, you get removed from the board. So it's important that you stay up to date on everything, because if not, then eventually what will happen is you will have to resign from the board. That's kinda how it works. What about this scenario, though? Let's say we've got a really hot topic. And, you know, it's a split vote, it's a five-four type vote. Hmm. And the losing side or whatever, the opposition decides they wanna start digging into it and they find out, okay, well, these commissioners who voted yea on this, hmm. not, they have never taken this commissioner training. They did not have their ethics and their sexual harassment training. That just gives them ammunition to poke a major hole in that decision made by the commission and they could use that as their basis for having it overturned or, or kick it back to the beginning again. They could, they could certainly try, yeah. 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 Not to give anybody any ideas, but. Yeah, that's why it's important to stay up to date. Procedure is always gonna be, that's always your, the, the hole in your armor. Yes.
Hmm, all right, Mr. Thibodeau.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Director, any, any update on the, uh, wastewater collection and treatment study, uh, with regards to, you know, the, the disaster?
Yeah, uh, right now, the, the, um, engineers are working on that master plan through the DR project. Uh, we had a me- an update meeting this morning with the, um, consultants at CSRS and they're telling us that the, um, the, the, the project software is called T-Ride, I forget what it stands for, but basically it's an online dashboard where the public will be able to access and see the status of all these projects and get updates and, and also get the basic information about, like, they'll, they'll have the application, the approved scope of the project and the maps that go along with it, all front and center, easy to access. But you can, you can track the progress, like where it's at in the, in the process, and then public meetings, all that stuff, minutes from any meetings, all of that will be linked to that dashboard.
Okay.
So, it's about to go live.
Okay, I, uh, you may know already, but, uh, South Central Planning is heading up a Betnet project for the folks that live in northern Terrebonne to help the residents who might be polluting Bay Terrebonne and other areas to get up to date, uh, for, I guess, uh, for low income, they'll pay up to four thousand dollars and for other folks, they'll pay up to two thousand dollars to help you get your wastewater treatment in order. So I think that's a good thing. I don't know when they started, but I, I did, uh, put my name in the list. The negative part of that, the resident, residential units that are rental, they, 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 they don't qualify and they got a lot of them along Bay Terrebonne.
Why don't they qualify?
I don't know. I, I expressed my concern about that to South Central Planning. I hadn't heard back from them. That's part of Bettnep's regulations, I guess.
But is LM, it's LMI, is a requirement?
No, it's not a requirement, but LMI will get a greater subsidy. It'll get a four thousand dollar subsidy versus the others will get two thousand.
Well, I'm, uh, I'm meeting with Kevin next week, so I'll ask him about it.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Billiot.
Sorry, week after next.
I just wanted to quickly, uh, report that I, uh, participated with Chris at the Complete Streets Advisory Committee meeting. Uh, we had voted to, uh, move forward with establishing a complete streets policy. Um, and so I, um, participated in that and, uh, there was good feedback from, like, the sheriff was there, press was there. Um, and so, uh, I think we had some good feedback. Uh, at, um, CPex was there to facilitate getting the input from, uh, the people who were on the advisory committee. So I just wanted to, um, let everyone, make everyone aware of how that was working. There's going to be three more advisory committee, uh, meetings, uh, coming up throughout the year. But, uh, some really good feedback, just, I just wanted to throw out, uh, to remind everyone, Complete Streets is, um, trying to ensure that we're, uh, making streets, um, uh, attractive to more than just the automobile, so bike riders, walkers, people in wheelchairs, uh, disabled children, things of that nature. So, um, so that's what Complete Streets does. So we, 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 um, talked about some different things, pretty exciting things. So, uh, if you can imagine a walking, um, and, and biking lane the entire length of Grand Caillou Road from, um, from Woodlawn Ranch Road to Main Street and the, the entire length of, uh, of West Tunnel and Martin Luther King. So in any event, it's, it, uh, interesting things of that nature were discussed. This is just the policy, not, uh, not an action that we're working on. But anyway, I just wanted to give that update.
Yeah, that, thank you, Mike, for bringing that up. It, we also, I mean, it's, it's tho- pedestrian bicyclist vehicles, but it's also public transit. It's also, um, shipping, like trucks. You know, we're, we're working with DOTD on an alternate truck study, truck route study for Main Street. Um, DOTD was one of the, was, was present at that advisory committee meeting. So we're gonna be having more of those. We're also gonna be having public meetings throughout that process as well. And I did talk to Alex, uh, Hobdi with the, uh, with CPex and, uh, we had talked about possibly coming to the December meeting. Um, cause the agenda's usually kinda light, so be a good meeting for him to make a, a presentation about where they're at. Um, but, uh, yeah, that's glad you brought that up.
Mr. Sudier.
Yes, uh, a while back with, at Freshwater District Board, there was some talk about what you was talking about, Mr. Tillman, about, uh, what they calling it, hot water and, uh.
T starts with T.
Thibodeau. Thibodeau, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Well, anyway, they had some talk about it and, uh, they found a hot, a lot of hot spots where the, uh, where they had sewer drain and then
Yeah.
they wanna take action and, uh, I think it started it, but they found one of the biggest areas that had hot water was I think it said Lake Fields, when the pools are down. That's the worst place they found. But, uh, ain't nothing they can do about that. But, uh, they are contacting residents and, you know, trying to, but that's all with Bettnep, so. But, uh, the Freshwater District Board works very closely with Bettnep and other agencies in the area, so.
You know, that coupled with the, um, the dredging projects of the bayous, like Bayou Terrebonne, for example, um, that's another one of the disaster recovery projects. That'll also help with the water quality improvements, not to mention drainage, but also water quality. Cause I remember when, when Department of Health was doing that study, they had a similar program maybe about ten or twelve years ago along Bayou Terrebonne where they would offer assistance um, to the folks who had direct discharge and they would go and train them. Ho- they were hosting workshops on how to monitor and make repairs to your system. Nobody would ever show up to those workshops. But, um, it, Bayou Terrebonne, I mean, it would, the, the fecal count would get really high, especially after rain, everything gets stirred up.
Yeah.
So, that dredging will help.
Yeah. And, and, Mr. Chairman, I, I could recall, uh, as a young boy, looking in Bayou Terrebonne, looking at the fish. We had a, there's a barroom in the community, it's no longer a bar, but these pre-teen guys would assemble there. They had a porch that went over Bayou Terrebonne and so we would dive off the porch into Bayou Terrebonne. Basically, that's part of where I learned to swim at. And then you go in my backyard now, I live on Bayou Terrebonne, look at that mess now and it, it's really sad.
Yeah.
It's really a sad thing. I did wanna say, yeah, wow, one other thing I wanted to ask about and I guess I totally forgot. Oh, I know what it was, just for the public, in case you didn't read or in case you didn't hear and the commission members. Martin Luther King Boulevard, speed limit now has been lowered to forty-five miles per hour, so. I was riding yesterday and I swear, a guy must have been going sixty with them loud mufflers that passed me, so. Please, ma'am and please, sir, pay attention to forty-five miles per hour speed limit now. So please, ma'am, and please, sir, pay attention to forty-five miles per hour speed limit now. The safety of our public is important.
That's the first step in, uh, change that we're gonna be seeing in Martin Luther King. Their, uh, DOTD put out a very preliminary set of plans where they're basically looking at putting in a raised median.
Just needed.
Uh, with, with U-turns, with J-turns, some of the J-turns will be signalized, some won't. Um, they're also looking at closing off redundant driveways, making some more right-in, right-out only. Uh, they're also considering multi-use pa- multi-use paths on either side to allow. I mean, a lot of people don't believe this, but there are quite a few pedestrians and cyclists on MLK.
No, there is.
Um, so they need a much safer place to get to those bus stops and, and things like that. Um, right now, the timeframe, they're talking, DOTD's saying that the letting date would be July of twenty-six. But they are talking about having at least one public comment meeting sometime in the spring. So we'll be pushing that out as soon as that's announced.
And, Mr. Chairman, one last thing, uh, Chris, would you find out about the sidewalks on three sixteen? From Park or, or twenty-four North to Lost Bay? You know, it's, it's, it's probably fifteen to twenty years now and, and I don't see any, and I had spoken with our Senator. Uh, Mr. Alain, uh, early on this year about it, and he seemed to, uh. Have been able to light a little fire under the whole process, but I haven't heard anything since then. So if you can find out anything about if and when that will happen, I'd appreciate it and the community will also.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Thibodeau.
Joan. These sidewalks are under design, they're in design right now.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright. That's it, clear, clear the board, alright, public comments.
Connie Bird, fifty-nine fifty-three Alma Street, I'm glad you brought up the, the sidewalk thing. My question is, I notice I've been going back and forth to Thibodeau quite a bit lately. And I noticed they have sidewalks in gray on both sides of the road, and the grass is growing right over them, nobody's maintaining them. They're covered with grass. No, all portions are. I take exception.
I'm responsible for those sidewalks.
Okay.
I mean by that, during my councilmatic term, the South Central Planning assisted me with getting a transportation enhancement grant. To get those from mobile state all the way to the city of Thibodeau.
Correct, they're there.
So when you start to approach what used to be the cane field, that's where it's grown up, the rest of that stuff is pretty clean.
In front of Shiva Auto Parts, it's, it's totally covered in grass.
I, I don't, I'm going there tomorrow, but I don't think.
I'll meet you there. Yeah, because, and around the interstate, it's, it's hideous. Where Donny is, uh, the mediums, the sidewalks in that area are just, they're not maintained.
DOTD stuff, so.
And that's what, exactly, but still at all, that if you're gonna have sidewalks and you want sidewalks, you need to maintain the sidewalks.
Pedestrians use them, even though they're not maintained, you often have pedestrian traffic.
Yeah.
That's probably not fair to them.
Yeah. And through the grass, that's correct.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Connie. Alright, Ms. Carrie, you good? Okay, just checking, you're the only one here left, so I just figured I'd ask. Alright, I need a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Mr. Bill Yat, a second by Mr. Thibodeau, all approved, aye? All opposed, nay? Motion passes.